Started with our work session. Glad everybody could make it. As you know, this is a very informal thing, but it gives us the ability to discuss what's gears on the agenda for the work session and other items if you so wish to choose so. Item number one, board policy updates. And in your packet, it's actually in the packet for tonight, you have a policy six point six zero zero, student records. This is something that Mr. Lamb had brought up that's on the agenda for later, and I'm gonna give him the opportunity to discuss.
No, I was just asking.
Is it additions to it? Because I've got, I've got, I brought one and then there's the one here too.
Well, that's you.
I know, but I'm thinking there's one here too. Well, it has swearing in and then board updates, so that it is a different one, sorry.
Yeah, that first one, Mitch has already been sworn in, so we don't have to do that.
Are you sure?
One word at a time.
If he didn't answer any better than he takes back, don't worry.
Does anybody have that, found that in your packets? And Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So basically, you know, I was approached right before, a couple of days before our last meeting. One of the concerns that high school was having with students wanting to be called different names other than what their, either their birth certificate or what the registration was saying. The state did pass a new law, I think it was June, May, June, that basically cleared up some confusion. And I talked to Jennifer White at T S B A. The only thing that, we already had this in board policy, the six point six, but it was just adding. Actually, I don't think in our, ours it has the, I can tell you exactly where it's at though. The only thing that was added was, "Students shall be," excuse me, on line number eight at the end, "Students shall be referred to by the name used on their student record" "or derivative thereof, example related nickname." So, for instance, if a student's name is Tom and he wants to be called, you know, Timmy, they're not, they're not gonna do that. So, it's just to help keep our teachers from having to deal with different things like that. Put it in a nice way. So, yeah, but Jennifer White said that we did not need a new board policy, that we just needed to add this to the existing policy and that we should be fine. So, again, the, the high school was already kind of implementing because of the state law. They were trying to follow state law, so we just needed to clear this up, just so there was no backlash on us.
That's just more of a, I believe you said, it's just a more of a give the school system the ability to uphold the law.
Right, exactly, yeah. They don't, they don't want to have to, because it, parents are, you know, we know that parents, even though they may or may not agree with the law, but it's still the law. So, you know, they need to follow it. And we don't want anyone trying to say that we're going against their rights. So, well, the rights are that we call them by what is on their birth certificate.
Any other discussion on this policy? Any other policy updates anybody wants to discuss while that's open there? Number two, discussion of the wrestling team. I had reached out to Mr. Wallace here and asked him, and Mr. Craig had too, to give us a little information on this, because I know you guys, I've seen some of you see, seeing some of the emails that are going around with all the people wanting this in our school system and the work they've been doing. So, I just asked them to, to give us a little update, because they said they've been researching it, so at this time we'll just, Mr. Wallace.
Well, I had, I think I had over, we've had over twenty, is that right Nick? Over twenty parents and students who have, actually more than when we were, when we were looking at volleyball. They're very interested in us creating a, starting a wrestling program here in Stewart County. I'll just say this right off the bat, there, there's no way we can have wrestling this year. So, if somebody asks you, why aren't we having wrestling this year? It just can't be done, because the logistics of getting everything that you would need, you wouldn't think there's much to it, but there's, there's some things that you have to have in place. And Coach Wallace has done, I think, a great job of reaching out to other places that started, that have started wrestling or have wrestling programs now. And so, if it's okay with y'all, I'm gonna let, let Coach Nick talk to us about it a little bit, what he's found out.
I mean, I started with Benji Gray, who's the, you know, he's on the tackle board of directors with me, and he's the head over wrestling. So, I just kinda got him started with, on where I should go. He, he put me in the last three schools who've started programs, Battle Creek, which is a new school, some other schools that are local, not too far. Just for financials and for possible hiccups and, because, I mean, I'm very, you know, uneducated on wrestling, I'll be honest with you. So, so I just tried to crash courses as best I can. And like Mike said, I think it's thirty-three, I think we have thirty-three students, and this is co-ed now. Wrestling is similar to golf in regards to, across country, when you have the event, the boys and girls kinda do it at the same time. So, you don't have to have a boys game and a girl, it's, it's very similar to those style things. And, you know, the overall financials aren't bad. Every year, the kids are probably gonna be out somewhere between, if, if they buy their own uniforms, which are singlets, and their headgear and stuff like that, which they're probably gonna want to, because that's something they're gonna wanna keep. You're probably looking somewhere around, anywhere from low end a hundred to high end one seventy-five on, on that, per student. And then, you know, as far as, as, as we go, you know, it's really the mat. I was advised on anything larger than thirty-six by thirty-six was kind of the minimum number. I got them to, I got Benji to tell me basically who the best people were to use. He, he gave me a couple of places that give, you know, that'll sell you more of a generic style mat that doesn't really have any, you know, customization or anything like that, it's just a mat. They run around seventy-five hundred for, you know, what the size we would need, sometimes up to nine. Now, if you go with the better ones, I was advised pretty heavily on this, there's two styles of mats. One of them requires tape that sticks to the floor, and one is a newer style that doesn't do that and that doesn't require that, supposed to have much more durable, and it's not so rough on the floors. And that, and, and they are a little higher. The, for those, I got two quotes from the places he recommended. One of them, and these were like, they had an S C on them, these were custom for our, for us, they were forty-two by forty-two, I think, and one was thirteen thousand, one was fourteen thousand. These are like, they attach through some sort of connect system, so they don't have to actually stick to the floor. And, I mean, as far as the financials, I really don't think there's anything much more than that, other than a normal, you know, you're, you've got your normal, you gotta pay for referee, or, you know, umpires, I'm not sure what you call a wrestling referee. But, but, you gotta pay, you're gonna have to pay for that, and then, you know, same as
A coach.
Coach, coach, you gotta get, you gotta get your coach, and you know, transportation, all those things. And, you know, me and Mike talked about it, and Benji heavily told me this. He said, Nick, best thing to do, first year, don't host anything. He said, since we're all learning it too, he said, just your first year, if you're gonna do it, go make all your, you know, matches away. So, I can show up early, and the coach can show up early, and we can, you know, get taught some things too. And, and I think there's, you know, I think there, from what I understand, there's a lot of people in this county that know about wrestling. I mean, I mean, from, from what I understand, I mean, a lot of these kids are doing it what we would call travel style, like travel ball style. I mean, that's essentially what I'm picking up from a lot of these, they're doing it, they're already doing it, they're just not doing it through the school. So, but, other than that, that's really all the, the main advice he gave me. I mean, I, I also told Mike, I think it would be wise on our end if we did it at Dover Elementary. I think we use that as the wrestling facility, because it is a bloody nightmare right now at the high school with, you know, and I don't know, I don't know where we would, I, I know we don't have any more locker rooms, and, and I, I know we don't have anywhere to stick them as far as a lot of that, we don't even have anywhere to put the mat right now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I know, I don't know anything about wrestling, so I'm just asking.
I'm learning to.
Do you have like, multiple events going on at the same time that would require multiple mats, like two or three, four mats?
Well, these mats have more than one spot on them.
Sure, okay.
That's the way they work. And, and I think that's really according to how large your team is, you can have one or two wrestlers, and that's it. It's kinda similar, like I said, to a golfer cross-country. You can just compete as individuals if you don't have enough for a whole team. There's a bunch of different weight classes, it's like every seven pounds, like, starts at a hundred and two, I think, then a hundred and nine, I don't know what, but it's every So, essentially, you could have a lot of players, I mean, representing each weight class, boys and girls, so I don't know if we're, like I said, I don't know if we would do that, but, but yeah, I mean, you can. Some people, I've, I've seen that before, where they have, most people really use their auxiliary gyms for this. I mean, you know, a lot of the schools that I know, they have auxiliary gyms, and that's basically what they turn into like their wrestling spots, so they can leave the mats down a lot more during the winter season, because it's a winter sport, so which it's played during basketball season. It would start in, your practices would begin in, in the first, I mean, last week of October, first week of November, and it's gonna go all the way to mid-February, hopefully mid-March if you do it right.
Do you have any matches that you normally have?
Uh, the, the qualification, I can't remember exactly what, I mean, the maximum, I can't remember how many it was. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of like basketball, it was like twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, I was thinking especially that first year, if we did it and we had to have the transportation, you know, factoring in that cost, I mean, because if we're not gonna buy mats, I mean, we're saving money there, but we're, we're not really gaining.
We would have to buy mats for the, just to practice.
That's true, that's true.
They've gotta have a mat just to practice.
What, what, as far as schools, I mean, is there any other schools similar to our size? I don't, I know Houston County doesn't have one, or Fairview does?
It's really true, pretty much, it's, it's, it's growing pretty fast. It's a lot, I mean, it's a lot around us. I mean, obviously, anything in Clarksville has it, Fairview, Creekwood, I mean, there's, it's, it's, it's not uncommon anymore. It's pretty popular, to be real honest with you. It's actually, when I was reading this, it's actually the fastest growing female sport in Tennessee right now. So, I think that'll probably get ousted by flag football pretty soon.
Nick, so there is, there is a district?
Yes, sir.
There is a district?
Yeah.
And it's based off your enrollment of your school?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think they're grouped in with, I think wrestling is grouped in with tennis and them like that, and so it's done. There, there's not gonna be as many classes, there won't be one, two, three, four, like, five, six, like football, you know, because there's not that many, but yeah, they have district, region, state tournament, I mean, it's, it's T double S double A sanctioned, so.
What is usually the amount of team members they have?
It's very, I mean, it's very random, you know, you can have two. I mean, because then you won't get to compete as a team, they would just be basically competing as individuals within their own weight class.
And then when they go, I don't think that, but I've, I've been reading, but when they go and making them to, you know, past district or whatever, you have what are called duels, and you have teams.
Yeah.
So, if you have kids, I mean, they compete for an individual title, and then they go and, like, for schools that don't have a full team. Because you, it may be like golf, I mean, like, we play people in golf sometimes, they don't have six kids, or four kids, or whatever you gotta have, but one will play, he can still make the state tournament. So, even if you don't have a full team, the kids have an opportunity to advance.
And I've had girls, and I've, I've had my girls team in golf be like that before, where I didn't have a team, I just had one girl that competed as an individual.
Do they have like, an average of how many's on there, like the maximum? You know, because, you know, with, where you've got basketball players, volleyball players, do they have a maximum, pretty much, that
I would say that would be based on weight class, yeah, I would, I would say that'd be based on weight class, like, there's however many weight classes you wouldn't wanna have, but more than one or two per weight class. I don't think we've ever crossed that.
I know some guys who had, who, who were in schools that were doing it, and you, it's almost unlimited now. You might have forty kids, but then they have to wrestle each other to qualify for a match.
It's very similar to golf and cross-country. When I hear a lot about it, it's very similar to golf and cross-country. There's a lot of qualifications, you gotta qualify in your weight class to get there, and to be honest with you, it doesn't really stop at middle school, there's elementaries that do this. I mean, it's, they got them down to like seven years old. I mean, and, and cross-country and golf are the same way, it's, it's very comparable. Like I said, outside of the mat, and they told me somewhere between, based on how you treat it, seven to ten years. That's what you were looking like on a mat, so.
So, every seven to ten years, you'd have to replace the mat, at least for competition.
What about moving forward into like college type stuff, like is, is there's some growth there?
Girls wrestling in college is getting huge.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's really fast growing, like I said, I'm, I'm learning fast with, with whoever, you know, Benji's being real good to me because he's, and he's, he's helping me out a lot, but, but I, I haven't even ventured into the college world yet, so I'm just trying to figure out the high school world.
Golf has been great with our kids and
Well, like I said, I think it's, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing for the kids, because like I said, I think it's based on your weight class. And in a lot of sports, I've been around, your, your size can affect your abilities, you know what I'm saying? Like, so I mean, wrestling is, it is kinda aimed at people for whoever they really kinda, wherever they can compete from.
I think any sport that we can provide for these children, because it, not everybody's, may play football, basketball, golf, whatever, you know, fishing. I think it, it, it opens up the door for more opportunity. So, you know, I think that's, the more we can offer, that I think the better off we are, just my thoughts.
I know it's big up north, I have a nephew that wrestles in New York, and, and they, and it's a lot of hard work too. I mean, they, they practice all the time, and it's, it's something that, when I tell them that we don't have it here, you know, they, they really find that
Another call, we forgot about, sorry. Gotta have a scale too.
Yeah, we have to have a scale, but I've already got into that, there's, there's actually money I can get for that. There's the T double S double A, it's kinda like the shot clock deal with basketball. There's, there's actually some stuff you can do where they'll, they'll give you, kinda like a
Coach Gans wrestling in high school at ninety-seven pounds.
Who did?
There is a, there, there is a difference for boys.
A year to wrestle. You go from a hundred forty in football to ninety-seven and wrestle at ninety-eight.
I think it's just
I hope that camera gets it.
Poor Dave, I mean, he's in our, he's in my club.
Mitchell, how long is that wrestling ring in your backyard last?
Um, not real long.
But Mike, like I said, I mean, like I was telling Mike, I'm, the only thing I would say truthfully is I'm serious, I mean, because I know y'all don't, aren't there on the day-to-day, and Ben and Chris and like, if we're really gonna help them, and we really want them to, to do it, we need to really focus on Dover Elementary, because it's going to be a war. Because mats, like I said, if we, they've got that gym there that nobody uses after three P M. There's no reason why they can't practice there. I mean
I feel like you would find out the where, I don't even know how you go past that, till you find out where it's gonna happen at, and
Those mats, they come apart, because they're like in squares, they're like, and they piece together, so that, I mean, we'd be able, it'd be able to be taken apart and used, because that stage doesn't get used for a whole lot. So, couldn't it be, I mean, that's something that definitely
I really don't know where we put it at the high school right now.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
Well, they still got locker rooms over there, are they still? There's two, there's two, it'd have to all be, it'd all have to be cleaned out, there's storage or anything.
With that being said, I'm not trying to jump the gun, but if it, if it's considered being Dover Elementary, I sure wish we could get those potholes fixed, we should go back to the gym. They are really, I didn't realize it till my granddaughter started Dover Elementary, and I'm gonna tell you, the pickup there is wonderful. It is, it's so much better than the oversight there, but those holes, there was somebody dodging one one day, and, ooh, it wasn't, it didn't look good for me. Which, they're going slow, but it's some pretty bad potholes over there.
I'll get them.
Okay, thank you.
I think some of them can be patched temporarily with that stuff, you just
I think most of them can, because it's just some, but there's not a lot, but what it is, they're pretty bad. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing up Dover Elementary, that, that brought up another subject.
All right. Any other discussion?
Can I ask this? And, and like I said, we can't get this done in time for season this year. You know, I would say that, y'all wanna do your own research, we'll, we'll look some more things, and then we can come back later and do something, if you, and bring it to the board in a formal way if we wanna start it. I don't know when, do that in spring maybe, or?
Well, I, I know that the, the Facebook post that went around, and I, I've spoke to the lady a couple of times, that one that's been really pushing for it, you know, and of course, on the post, you had a ton of parents posting their kids' names, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they'd be interested. Now, would, there wouldn't be nothing against kids actually signing like an petition, but signing like a form to say, hey, I, you know, an intent that I'm interested in this.
I have like, I mean, I have like thirty-five kids' names, I mean, for that have reached out to them.
That's good, man, and that's what I'm wondering, because
That's from elementary school all the way to high school.
I saw you decide, there's a lot of elementary that
Yeah, and I don't think there's nothing wrong with that. If it's gonna be at Dover Elementary, why, why not have elementary school kids starting young? Yeah. Listen, I can think it's gonna be all over the rest of this town. Are y'all okay with putting this on the agenda for November? Does that give you enough time to discuss that?
I've got, I've got all that research in a document, I can email it to all y'all, so
Would you do that, please, so they can read it too?
Yes, thank you. That'd be good.
How, how many assistance are you expecting to have? Because I know my grandson's in Indiana, and it's big up there.
It is.
And I went to one, and they had twelve wrestling matches going on.
I think you stepped into wrestling heaven up there in the Midwest, I think that's what that is up there. But, I mean, like I said, I think that would probably be based on the size of your team, and really the availability. You know, I don't wanna speak for people, but, but I, I know, you know, a lot of this has grown, if you're not, you know, where this come from. But this, this martial arts place that's down here by the high school, they have a wrestling class. So, that's kinda where this is kinda grown from, I believe, because a lot of those people are, are, are the ones that are contacting me. And a couple of those guys are coaches, I mean, and we have non-faculty coaches, but, you know, we always wanna get a faculty coach. And we've got some people, I think, in mind, and, and other people that, that got, that, that have some history, you know.
Well, getting assistance, that don't always have to be paid, I mean, a lot of times they're volunteering, we have, we have tons of volunteer
But I think you're right, I think it is more of a hands-on, like, I think there's a lot of times, there's a lot of assistance there, if possible. But, I mean, that's gonna be like every sport, how many, how many parents and people you got willing to help you, you know?
If you get any idea where, where, where you're just gonna start? You know, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and eighth.
Uh, well, we, we couldn't start in elementary, we can't do that. I mean, we can only do, we're only sanctioned through sixth, third, and twelfth grade.
Sixth through twelfth.
Yeah, we can't technically do anything school-based to the elementaries, because we're, we're not sanctioned to do that, so, I mean, and I don't think it's something we need to do, even if we were gonna do that, we'd probably need to grow to that, you know? I mean, I've always been a proponent of starting at the middle school and working your way to the high school, but, but I, I think, I think if you've got some kids who are already wrestling already anyways, they're really not starting new, you know? Some of these older kids have been wrestling for quite some time, just not for the school.
It's something we could eventually become sanctioned though, right?
Uh, I don't know.
If it, if it ever grew big, I'm just saying
There's some weird rules, okay? Mike can tell you, like, there's some rules about, like, you're, you're, you can't compete unless their buildings are actually in the same location, they have to have the same principal. It's some weird stuff out there for, for, for that stuff.
For elementary.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, because you got the, like, those schools like McEwen.
Right.
You know, who are K through, you know, whatever. They have a little bit easier time with stuff like that than we do. It's even the same for us with middle and high school. We can't really have eighth graders play at the ninth grade level like a lot of people can, for the same reason, because
I do think if, with it being on the agenda, and I'm fine with it, that we should start with middle school, because Mike was saying it was such a big thing in college. I think if you wait till you get to high school, you know, if the, some of the kids are, are serious enough, they wanna try to get a scholarship, I think they need to start in middle school. I think the middle school should be, we should have both, I mean, that's, that's my saying.
Thanks, Nick.
Sir.
Put that on, your November's there. Next is the, down here for the five-year strategic plan, which he have a for you there.
I'm putting everybody's under, at your seat, it looks like this, it's Stewart County Strategic Initiatives, twenty-five to thirty, you have to, every five years, we'd have to do one of these for another five years. And what Dr. Duncan did is, he went through and we, the five areas that are included in your strategic plan, and we, we just have samples there. And we're gonna be working on this between now and November board meeting. And if, I wanted to put this in your hands, so you could look at it. And if you have any ideas or questions, or things that you think that we should possibly include, at the bottom of the second page, you've got Dr. Duncan's email. I would suggest that, if you have things that you want, that you think we need to look at, please let us know, and then our plan is to get this done between now and November, and then bring it to you November for your approval, because we have to have it done before the, before the end of the year. But you can see that there are five different areas, technology, academic excellence, stakeholder engagement, human capital, and facilities.
Everything is gonna be getting over approved a little bit.
We would like to, we would like to have it to you, a plan to you, for y'all to look at. And if y'all can give us any input, now, if you don't wanna give us any input, we kinda have a, we've got, you know, what, samples of what you kinda look at, and what we, and we've been talking about what we need to do, in our minds, what we need to do over the next five years. But we wanna make sure that y'all are included in, in the process. For example, five years ago, one thing was having to be one-to-one with computers. We're beyond one-to-one now, right?
Yeah, well beyond.
Well beyond one-to-one. I guess some kids can sit there with two, we've got Chromebooks in every room, everybody has access to technology. We have Promethean, one of the other things, we're replacing all the smart boards we had in, you know, when we had that COVID money. We bought Promethean boards for every classroom in the system. So, a lot of things that we had in our first plan five years ago, we've already done, so we're gonna be looking to expand upon that. For example, we've gotta figure out a way, we've got all these Chromebook, uh, Chromebooks, is to have a plan to, when they go out, because they don't last forever. What's, what's the life on a Chromebook?
Four years is, I mean, is the active life on the license, but, you know, they're, they're getting screens replaced and keyboards replaced before that.
Two years.
Yeah, maybe.
Kids are rough on Chromebooks, y'all didn't know that. They, they get banged around, but that's the part we have to, you know, we're looking at, is a plan to replace them as they go out. We're doing a pretty good job right now, I think. But that's just the, the different things. Academic excellence, it's, you know, that one for example, we also have to do a TISA plan, so we're, we're gonna be lining it up with what we said we wanted to do, our goals were going forward. So, you can read through that, I don't expect this tonight to hammer out a bunch of stuff, but I wanted to get it to you and let you have a chance to give us some input on. If y'all have any questions, myself and Dr. Duncan can answer them, I think.
It's work sessions, we need to have, have these every time, well, every month, I guess. And trying to work out anything, any questions on these in our work session, of November.
Yeah, we can, sure. Y'all have questions, you can either email them, or we can do it in a work session, yeah. And if we get to November, and we all think that when we're ready to approve, we can work on it some more, and I just thought, I just hit November so we'd have it done before Christmas, when everything, you know, and then we've got it together, and it's done.
I didn't know if this was a state thing, you had to have a January first, something like that.
Is there a deadline?
Well, yeah, there is, but since we're Level One monitoring, it's not as stressful, because that's where they would look for that, you know what I'm saying? And so I feel like it would carry you through the academic year, so if it rolled out to January, I don't think it's you're talking about three weeks, two weeks, so. You're talking about three weeks, two weeks, so.
Any other discussion or comments on that? So, we'll go to the next line, coaching supplement proposal. Earlier, uh, earlier in the, uh, the year, we were, we were discussing some things, and, and many people, and we've been talking about it too, as a, as a, in a leadership, in a leadership here in the, in the building, about, we have, well, since I've been here in Stewart County, and Mr. Wing can probably give me a little more perspective, our coaches have not had a raise. They've had the same set of supplements for at least twenty years. And, uh, and it was brought to me by some of y'all, that we needed to look at giving coaches a, a coaches a raise. And so, we came up with, and this is just a proposal, this is not, this is not law, this is not anything that, but we had two proposals, the first two pages in the, that I've, that I've got here is a thirty-three percent raise on coaching supplements. And in this, you'll see that we've also, we thought it would be a great idea, not only give a, a raise right here, but have built into it where you can give increment raises over the next five years to them. So, for example, if we gave, and we can do this retroactive, if we approve a, a coaching supplement revision, and again, this would be something I'd bring to, we would bring to you in November, we can't do it tonight. The thirty-three percent raise, uh, for example, let's just talk about the fishing team, that's an easy, easy number. Right now, it's two thousand dollars. With a thirty-three percent raise, this year, it would be twenty-six, six, seven. Then a five percent raise, and for twenty-six, twenty-seven, would go to twenty-eight hundred, then twenty-nine forty, and then twenty-eight, twenty-nine. That would, you would finish, at the end of that cycle, the, the fishing team coach would be making three thousand eighty-seven dollars a year. Now, I think that it would be wise, if we did that, that we put into the, however y'all wanna do it, but you put in there, uh, these increment raises going forward, if the budget allows. Because we don't know what could happen, you know, one year, if we can't, can't do that. But this would be an outline to use. And this is at the end, on the second page. Did I read this right? Okay, on the second page, at the bottom, we, we put some final, uh, Mr. Wing put some final numbers together for us. Right now, all of our coaching supplements are a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, is that correct, Mr. Wing?
The coaching supplements that are on that sheet.
On this sheet are, are a hundred and ten thousand. This thirty-three percent raise would cost a hundred four, instead of a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-six, total.